My house, but.
Are they the little tiny ones or?
Uh, Nick, and I need to check the pronunciation of your last name. Is it Noth or not?
It's actually neither. Uh, it's pronounced Kenoth.
Oh.
Oh.
Sorry, Nick.
No.
Oh, I don't.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you.
I don't blame anyone for, uh, I don't blame anyone for correcting or pronouncing it correctly. My family pronounces it incorrectly.
Ah, well, thank you. Okay. Well, Nick is a graduate, uh, Nick graduated from the University of Missouri Columbia with degrees in political science and history, along with certificates in American constitutional democracy and multicultural studies. He has spent his career working in and around all levels of government, including time in the Missouri House of Representatives, the U.S. House of Representatives, U.S. Senate, U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and Columbia Chamber of Commerce. Nick's time in government has fueled his passion for vocal proactive leadership. Nick has been active in his community over the years, including serving on the City of Columbia Housing and Community Development Commission, volunteering with the Food Bank for Central and Northeast Missouri, and serving on the Board of Representatives for the Family Access Center of Excellence, FACE. And he is currently on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Columbia and the MU Extension Council for Boone County. As a result of his childhood, he knows what it is like to be evicted, for a parent to lose their job, and for a family to experience food insecurity and domestic violence. He appreciates the help and support from his community, including a high school teacher who believed in him enough to pay for his college application fees, enabling him to pay, enabling him to become a first-generation student at Mizzou. Nick is married to his wife Taylor, a public health nurse and fellow MU alum. They reside in Columbia with their sweet dog Sam. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you for the introduction, Kathy. Uh, as a former member of the County Democratic Central Committee and someone who has knocked doors for representatives Martha Stevens and David Tyson Smith, county clerk Bruno Lennon, the school board member Catherine Sasser and others, I'm very excited to be here with you all as a candidate myself. Uh, as she said, my name is Nick Kenoth and I am running for presiding commissioner. Excuse me. I'm running because I believe Boone County needs proactive, unifying leadership that's focused on increasing our quality of life, strengthening our infrastructure, and supporting economic opportunity for everyone. I think it's vital to have leadership in Boone County that appreciates and understands the socioeconomic realities that so many in our community face, while also having the practical knowledge and ability to bring a diverse population together to make real progress. My professional and personal experiences have led me to understand just how important it is to have leaders in Boone County who deliver results that help parents provide for their children, keep our neighbors out of a jail cell and off the streets, and support a safe and prosperous environment for all who wish to call Boone County home. So, how would I do that? Well, I'd start by being proactive and unifying. It sounds obvious, but unfortunately, our county government is, is often reactionary and organized into silos that do not communicate well, if at all. This has created inefficiencies and waste that lead to missed opportunities and slow response times. I know it's possible to be proactive and unifying because I've done it. Coalition building and bringing folks together for a common purpose is what I do. A, a notable example of my efforts actually revolve around the replacement of the Roachport Bridge on I-70. The Mid-Missouri I-70 Task Force, as the media named it, was something that I formed and led that represented the impacted communities. I brought together leaders from three different counties and six cities, many of whom had never met before I convened them. Unifying leadership is not some high-minded or far-fetched idea. It just takes sincere effort and a willingness to sit down with people different from yourself. It's about building relationships and getting folks to work together. The presiding commissioner role is perfectly suited to lead the county in this capacity. This goes back for me to, to what I mentioned about our county government being siloed. An example of what I mean by that is your average person probably doesn't even know the county government exists. And if they do, they don't really know what it does. That is a direct symptom of what I'm talking about. And I'll add, because it's important, that it's not just average folks. Many of the elected officials at the local level, whether that be your city councils or school boards, don't know their county representatives well, if at all. And I know this to be true. I'm not pulling that out of thin air because I actually know the vast majority of Boone County's local elected officials because I've worked with them and they have told me so. Here's the thing. It's something we all know to be true in our own lives. Most problems can be solved with a conversation. But when it comes to our county, those conversations are not happening because there is no relationship there and little to no effort to build one. This is so important because Boone County has so many wonderful opportunities and several serious challenges that need to be addressed by working together. When I've worked with municipalities throughout the county, one thing I always told folks is that we all have the same problems. They're just happening on a different scale. But if we can work together, combine our resources, our expertise, and our relationships, I genuinely believe that there is almost nothing that we cannot overcome. And it's not just about external stakeholders either.
Oh, no. God damn.
That is not even what I wanted to say. No, you're right.
I didn't use myself.
Sorry. Uh, sorry. What I was saying is it's, unifying leadership is not just about external stakeholders. It means bringing internal county government leaders together as well. You, any good manager knows that they must depend on the experts. As presiding commissioner, that means trusting the county auditor as chief budget officer or the county treasurer as a wise steward of county investments. So, this is why I start by saying we need unifying proactive leadership. That has to be the foundation. You can prioritize whatever you want, but if you are not bringing people together and addressing issues before they become a crisis, then you're not going to get much done. It's certainly almost nothing done well. I'll add briefly that I think one culmination of a unifying proactive county government would be the development of a strategic plan, one built on the input of citizens and with the collaboration of all local elected officials. Now, with that, I'll move on and discuss my priorities, which you probably already forgotten about. I mentioned that my three priorities as presiding commissioner are increasing quality of life, strengthening infrastructure, and supporting economic opportunity. Now, each of these priorities are an umbrella with a thousand things underneath them. But frankly, I believe that everything comes back to quality of life. If you're hitting potholes every day or you cannot find a living wage job, then that affects your quality of life. So for me, one practical application of what I'm saying is when I'm presiding commissioner, I'm going to ask myself every time something comes up for action, does it increase the quality of life for people in Boone County? If the answer is no, that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, but it does mean that we should take a closer look. There will always be functions of government that just have to be done, that don't necessarily improve quality of life. However, I firmly believe that government at any level exists fundamentally to increase our quality of life and make the world a better place. Basically, when we take an action that does not increase quality of life, then we should scrutinize it further, especially because local government has limited resources and capacity. So we need to be constantly conscious of whether or not what we're doing is actually bettering the lives of the folks who elected us. That brings me to my next priority as presiding commissioner, strengthening our infrastructure. I believe that a top priority for us has to be broadband development. We knew before COVID that Boone County had an unreliable patchwork of broadband, and like most things, the pandemic only made it worse. If we do not prioritize broadband, if we do not meet the needs, or rather the demands of the 21st century, our children and our communities will be left behind. It's, you know, I, I don't mean to be doom and gloom when I say that. You know, it's actually an exciting time for infrastructure because thanks to President Biden, for the first time in generations, robust federal infrastructure funding is coming. You, we combine that with the recent statewide gas tax increase, and we have real opportunity to make lasting improvements to our county. I'll add that thanks to the infrastructure funding that I just mentioned and the American Rescue Plan dollars that the county has received part of and will receive more of, we have an opportunity to address soft infrastructure as well. Soft or human infrastructure, as some will call it, i- is what enriches our community, and it's something we have often, at all of the government, failed to adequately invest in. I believe a key step towards community enrichment is recognizing that the answer for everyone breaking the law is not a jail cell. This is something Boone County has certainly made genuine progress on, thanks to the work of leaders like Commissioner Janet Thompson. Even with the progress we've already made, there's a rule of thumb for government that I adhere to. There is always room for improvement. We need to redouble our efforts by further supporting existing initiatives led by local nonprofits which address issues like recidivism and the factors that leave folks to jail in the first place. Nonprofit programs like the Reentry Opportunity Center or Into Action. Uh, there's voluntary action centers, opportunity campus that they're working on, and Borough Behavioral Health Crisis Center. All of these can or will provide invaluable resources to the most disenfranchised and downtrodden in our county. Oftentimes, folks just need mental health or social services rather than handcuffs. By supporting efforts like those I named, our county reaps key benefits. It enables our law enforcement to focus on violent criminals. It alleviates the taxpayer burden in our jail. And the most important benefit of all, it truly helps those who need it. So, speaking of helping those who need it, my third priority is supporting economic opportunity. When it comes to economic development, local government across the state, not just us, often bends over backwards to bring in businesses that promise big returns. And while I understand and even support that, I believe we must also do what we can to support local small businesses. Specifically, we need to support the development and growth of our minority and women-owned businesses in Boone County. A easy way for us to do so, just to start, there's always more, is to provide support to efforts like Ready's Supplier Diversity Program or Job Points Skills Training Programs. One last issue, if not a crisis, that I have to mention is affordable housing. This affects everything for everyone it impacts. As someone who, myself, who has moved more than 20 times before I was in high school, often as a result of eviction or trying to outrun it, I can tell you with confidence that nothing affects the stability of a family and the potential of a child to grow more than housing insecurity. An important tool that I believe our county has not utilized to its fullest potential is something like the Community Development Block Grant Program or CDBG. This program is something that I am very familiar with, thanks to my time serving on the Columbia's Housing and Community Development Commission. Some of you, if not most of you, likely know what this program is. But for those who don't, it is a federal grant program that can be used for everything from housing and broadband to sidewalks and sewer systems. If we tap this resource and pair it with the establishment of a community development financial institution and a community land bank, we can make significant, meaningful investment in affordable housing. These are all tools available to our county that have never been used for one reason or another. I, I will say in the case of CDBG, I, I believe it's actually been used twice in the last 20 years. I may be a little off on that, but something of that nature. So, I know I covered a lot. Uh, but that's because Boone County is an amazing place with, and with any amazing place comes immense opportunity and challenges. That's why, as your presiding commissioner, if elected, I will bring proactive, unifying leadership that's focused on increasing our quality of life, strengthening our infrastructure, and supporting economic opportunity for everyone. I will use the seat to lift others up in our community who don't have a voice. I will be a fierce advocate for our interests at the state and federal level and our biggest cheerleader for attracting people and commerce to the region. Again, I'm running because I know what it's like to struggle, whether that's the struggle of a single mother caring for her kids, a young professional trying to make their way in life, or a small business owner trying to keep their doors open. I understand how impactful local government is and how to bring people together to achieve meaningful progress. Boone Countyans can count on me to focus on getting things done. Most importantly, I know how county government works or doesn't. I know where the pitfalls are, and I already know many, if not all, the players. I am ready to hit the ground running and work for Boone County's interests on day one. Thank you all for inviting me to speak today. I hope some of what I said resonates with you, and I am more than happy to discuss anything at length and take any questions. Uh, I'm not one for speechifying, so I apologize that this was not as long as it should have been, uh, but I wanted to leave plenty of time for discussion.
Pam, has her hand raised? Pam, go ahead.
Nick, I'd like to know where you went to high school, where you were raised.
Yeah, uh, great question. So, I, I graduated high school from, uh, O'Fallon, Illinois High School. Uh, so as I mentioned, I moved over 20 times before I was in high school. Uh, so for me, you know, folks always want to ask, oh, where you from? Where's, where's home? Uh, and the where, the where I'm from part is difficult because, you know, when you move over 20 times before you're in high school, that what, you know, what does that qualify as, as to home? So, you know, I can attest to graduating from O'Fallon, Illinois High School, but I don't have any family there, and, and I'll add that I've lived here longer than, far longer than I've lived anywhere in my life.
Good.
Looking for other questions? Anyone has, feel free to unmute yourself and, or raise a hand and we'll call on you.
Oh, I'll, I'll throw out one.
I've got my hand up.
All right, go ahead first. Mine can wait.
Oh, no, that's all right, Scott. Go ahead and then I'll get mine.
Okay. All right, Nick. I was wondering, what, what's your strategy for running for, uh, and how you plan to conduct your race during the primary and then onto the general?
Uh, I think you, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, was your question, what's my strategy for running in the primary and general?
Correct.
Okay. So I think this, you know, this seems straightforward, but I, I think we need to emphasize it. This is a local race. This is local government. So we need to be discussing local issues. And to that end, one of the goals I set for myself when I set out on this path was, and I would hope anyone running for the seat would, that I should only do this if I can gather support from across the county, you know, not just Columbia or not just Ashland, but everywhere. And to do so requires talking to everyone. Uh, you know, in my case, and, and this is my strategy, no matter the primary or the general, it's talking to folks. It's talking to the executive director of every nonprofit in Boone County, literally sitting down with every school board member in the county, every board of Alderman, every city council, because the folks who are closest to their community in those cases, they know best what the issues and challenges are. And so I'm listening to them and, you know, I think that's the strategy. And I'm happy to say that, you know, one of the reasons why I have moved forward uh, and, and don't intend to, uh, do anything different is I've achieved the goal of having support throughout the county. You know, an issue that has often been discussed, especially about from folks not from Columbia, Boone County, is that there's no representation for anyone who doesn't live in Boone County, or live in Columbia, rather. Uh, and that's something that I seek to address, and that is, again, my goal is work with everyone, listen to everyone, and take their feedback and go forward with it.
As a quick follow-up, and I applaud that, that's ad, that's a lofty goal, but how would you go about reaching people down in Ashland or northern Boone County to get them involved? Because they're not going to want to drive to meetings, is typically what it's up to.
Yeah. So the same way, so I mentioned that my background is really founded in convening and collaborating people and building coalitions. The first step is always you go to them, right? Everyone in Boone County, again, who's not in Columbia, is very used to being kind of summoned to Columbia when they have to or they don't want to. I have been, you know, I, I've had dinner with Alderman in Centralia. I've had coffee with school board members in Southern Boone. I'm going to them and I make an explicit point of doing so because it's, it's not important just to listen to them. It's important to be in those communities and see it for yourself. You know, when I talk to, uh, Alderman in Centralia, I'm walking the street with them and I'm looking at specific intersections where they have issues. You know, I'm not from Centralia. I have not spent much time there. If I wasn't there, that wouldn't hit home with me if they were not standing next to me pointing out what they're talking about. So I think showing up is half of it, uh, and, you know, the other half is listening. Uh, Kathy, you want to go?
Yes. My question is if you would expand on, uh, what you were saying about ways to increase affordable housing stock, because that is certainly a pressing need in this area.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I named three things, three tools in our toolbox, let's say. Then we have the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is available to every county, uh, in Missouri. That has, you know, depending on the formula, that one alone could provide up to $250,000 a year to our county. Uh, and, and while that can be used, a- as I mentioned, for things ranging from broadband and sewer systems to sidewalks and everything in between, it's most notable for expanding affordable housing, whether that's rehabilitating, uh, you know, kind of worn-down housing or, or, uh, just directly building new housing. Uh, Columbia, the city of Columbia is very good, uh, about using their CDBG funds that they receive directly because they're a large enough city, and I had, uh, the honor of serving on that commission that had oversight of that in, in directing a strategic plan. The county has the same opportunity. We can take those dollars from the federal government and use them in conjunction with nonprofits who are already doing the work, whether it's, uh, you know, things like Job Point or Habitat for Humanity, who are building homes that actually house people. And when it comes to the affordable housing crisis, and you'll hear this if you're talking to Randy Cole at the Columbia Housing Authority or Jane Williams with Love Columbia, or anyone who works in that, uh, sector of, of helping people who need housing, that the answer to housing is more housing. That, that's it. And that's the hardest answer, right? And so it's things like the Community Development Block Grant Program and the other two I mentioned, uh, a community, uh, financial, development financial institution, CDFI, and a community land bank. Uh, folks might not be too as familiar with those as they are with CDBG, uh, because they are often, you know, I think when it comes to a CDFI, uh, there's only a handful of them in the state, mainly around St. Louis and Kansas City. Those are federally chartered entities that have special privileges when it comes to financing uh, community kind of enrichment opportunities. Um, it's similar to how our housing authority has, uh, special grants and, and, uh, bonds that they can issue. This community development financial institution, if we were to found one, uh, can do the same. Um, and, and I'm actually very happy to see that, starting this coming year, I believe, uh, Ready, our regional economic development group that the county is a part of, as well as many of the cities within Boone County, actually included the establishment of a CDFI in their new strategic plan. Uh, so I'm glad to see that they also, uh, see the opportunity there. Uh, I think it's important to combine that either with CDBG or with something like, I, I shouldn't even say or, all three of these need to be together, a community land bank. That is really exactly what it sounds like. Uh, it is a community bank that's established, uh, by a governmental entity with the express purpose of purchasing land for the development of blank. I- in this case, I would say affordable housing is a number one issue. Uh, again, just like CDFI, it has special privileges, uh, and benefits that wouldn't be afforded to anyone else. Uh, and I think you combine a community land bank with a CDFI and our existing CDBG dollars that are available to us. Again, it's not, all those combined are not the answer, but again, there are tools in the toolbox that can help us make meaningful impact. And I'll, I'll leave it there. We could spend the rest of this hour talking about affordable housing.
Thank you.
I think Karen is next. Karen, second lady.
Hi. So I wanted to pivot back to, um, some of the issues that we're seeing with our jail system, Boone County Jail, Boone County Sheriff's Department. Um, as you may or may not know, I do a lot of work with Race Matters Friends and our bail fund. And over the last, I would say, more than a year now, the bail fund has actually been daily scraping data from the jail and from arrest records to kind of figure out and pinpoint where a lot of the issues are actually coming from when it comes to who's actually going to jail and who is not. And based on the data that we've been collecting, what we've actually been seeing is a lot of the issues are not even with the Columbia Police Department. They're actually coming from the Sheriff's Department who are pulling people over without probable cause, who are arresting people without probable cause. Um, right now, the City of Centralia has at least one ongoing, uh, court case around civil rights violations based on bad actions of the Sheriff's Department where they essentially arrested a young man after finding out that he didn't, he, he was here without papers, and he didn't know that because he'd been here since he was a baby. They put him in jail for four months, released him the day before Christmas because during that time, they were calling Homeland Security to come pick him up and have him deported to a country that he doesn't remember and has never lived in. Now, we were able to, like, interfere with this and get it, like, stopped so that he wasn't actually deported, and he filed a lawsuit against the City of Centralia for civil rights violations, which is currently ongoing. I don't think it's been resolved yet. And we keep seeing these sorts of corruption issues pop up over and over and over when it comes to the Sheriff's Department and the number of people who are being put in jail without an actual good reason. Do you have any plans on how to address this data that we've been collecting?
Yeah. Great question. Thank you for asking that, Karen. You know, I think fundamentally, one thing that would make a huge impact there is having people more involved in their county government. You know, county government's different from any municipality, as I'm sure a lot of you know, because the sheriff is independently elected to his position. So, you know, that's kind of its own fiefdom, but they still have to work. is independently elected to his position. So you know, that's kind of its own fiefdom, but they still have to work with the rest of county government, with the county commissioners, especially when it comes to budgeting. Uh, so I think it really requires leadership from the county commission to, to work with the sheriff to say, we need you to work with the community that you're impacting to address these concerns and build from there. So I would say it all begins with, we need people more involved. And that requires leadership from the county, whether it's the commissioners or the sheriff himself. And you know, committing to say, okay, let's, let's address this. Let's spend more time scrutinizing this process, figure out what the issues are. Because if we're not talking about it, if we're not committed to addressing it, then nothing's going to change, right? I mean, we can all, you know, file a complaint or, or, you know, talk about it in these meetings. But if we're not including the sheriff in that, or if we don't have support from our commissioners or other county elects just on the principle, then it's never going to happen. And again, that goes back to, we need to be proactive, right? We don't want to wait until something has gone horribly wrong to say, okay, we need to address this problem.
You know, I will say that Race Matters Friends has been actively trying to work with the Sheriff's Department and the county commission. And basically, the Sheriff's Department is coming back saying, we're not beholden to anybody. We can do what we want. And the county commission kind of feels like their hands are a little bit tied because it's their own office. It's their own elections. And you know, even last winter, when we were hearing complaints in jails of um, heat not actually getting into the, the individuals' jail cells, they wouldn't let anybody come in and inspect those. And we went to the county commission and we, we were like, hey, we, we need somebody to help us get into these situations so that we can do something about the mistreatment and civil rights violations that are happening right here in our county. So something to consider about what is actively happening in the background with organizations like Race Matters Friends.
Absolutely. I think you give a bring that up. I'd love to discuss that more at length with you.
Sure.
I don't know who was next. Mr. Miller?
Uh, yes, Mr. Knoll. Uh, thank you very much for being here today. And I was going to raise this question anyway, but it actually touches upon the discussion you were just uh, having. Um, isn't it a problem that Boone County is not, and I might have my terms somewhat uh, misplaced here, but I think, I think first class county, it does not have its own charter. And we have so many independently elected officials. Um, uh, isn't that a problem? And, and how do you uh, uh, get around a problem of that sort?
Well, I, I wouldn't say it is necessarily a problem outright. Uh, first I would add, you know, this subject has been put to a vote in Boone County twice. I believe just in the last 20 years, and both times it failed, and I don't think the vote was close either time. Uh, so clearly there's a feeling from the people that they don't want that, or at least at the time they weren't ready for it. I'll add that personally, I think there are pros and cons to both forms, whether it's our existing uh, first class uh, setup or the potential for going to a charter style county government. Both sides have pros and cons, right? I mean, if you go to a charter, then you consolidate more power in less people. And therein you have the potential for more, or I should say for less accountability, uh, and, and all kinds of things to happen with that. However, you are accurate when you say that, you know, when we have so many elected officials, as we currently do at the county level, that as Karen pointed out, that some elected officials can feel very emboldened and empowered to, you know, kind of to assert their fiefdom and say, this is my space. I'm not working with anyone. I'm going to do what I want. Uh, and I would say to that, you know, at the end of the day, those people are elected. And if there's enough interest, you can unelect that person. Uh, so that is a, is a decent failsafe. Um, as for, you know, what we can do to work in, within the current uh, structure of our government. Uh, again, and, and I hate to kick a dead horse, it's, it's about being proactive and actually going and talking to folks. I, uh, many of our county leaders have, you know, I think I've sat down with most, if not all of them at this point. And the one word that I think every single one of them has told me is everything's so siloed. Uh, and you know, again, that goes back to the fiefdom part of it. I'm like, well, have you tried just talking to each other? Uh, and, and you know, there's a lot of things that play into that, politics and personal relationships and egos. So you know, that requires again, that proactive, unifying leadership and humility. And saying, yeah, we're probably, maybe we're not going to fix this today or tomorrow, but we're going to keep talking about it and see what we can take it.
Al? Al Plummer?
Okay, I had to unmute. Uh, Mr. Knoll, uh, I would uh, applaud your willingness to uh, want to dive into this arena. And I would hope that whatever the outcome, uh, you would not uh, shy away from other endeavors, because apparently some of the issues that you raise uh, are, are matters that can be raised in many different environments. Uh, the question I had though is um, and you may have dealt with some of this in the intro, but what kind of leadership positions have you held?
Mm-hmm. So in every capacity that I've held has been around, again, building coalitions and getting people to work together. Those are all, you know, self motivated, let's say. Uh, oftentimes it's been someone brings to me, oh, we have an issue or I'm hearing about a problem. And then I, you know, often the nature of leadership is taking action and bringing folks together uh, in a positive way and not, you know, we've all seen it in the last, going on, what now? Five, six years that a lot of people are trying to lead through fear mongering and, and hate. Uh, and so my experience, whether it's been with the Columbia Chamber of Commerce, where again, I led, you know, the I-70 Task Force, the Columbia Community Partnership, the Central Missouri Infrastructure Coalition and other groups, has always been to build that bridge, don't burn it, right? And I've, I've gone to places, you know, again, going back to cities in Boone County that are not Columbia. You, you have, I, you often have to go to them not, I almost say hat in hand, but with humility, say, I know you've been treated poorly in the past, but I'd like to bring you, to bring you in and work together. Uh, and sometimes take responsibility for things that are not your fault, uh, but that were done in the past. And you know, you need to build bridges and move forward. Uh, so again, to your explicit question on my past experience, you know, it doesn't matter if I was at the Columbia Chamber or, or anywhere before that, it's always been about, I've always been in a position where my priority was to get folks to work together.
Carl and Mari?
Yeah. Well, welcome to Mule Scanners, Mr. Knoth. Uh, I, it's good to see you again. Um, I, I wanted to circle back a little bit um, to, to the housing issue. And there's, there's been kind of a thorny, or you might say intractable issue on a municipal level. I'm curious as to how you feel about it with respect to the county. But that is Airbnbs. And uh, and, and I regret to say that the city council has, has kind of delayed some of the decision making on this whole thing. But in the last few years, obviously, and they're starting to become some uh, some uh, emphasis on this uh, in, in terms of editorials, uh, it's, it's the jeopardizing of affordable housing by the Airbnb market and the corporations and the IPOs that are, that are invading, if you will. There was, there were a few remarks that were made that this started out as a kind of a rent relief in San Francisco by a few folks who bought some air mattresses and, and served breakfast to their guests. And it's turned into an $80 billion company that's now devoured millions of housing units, evicted families and, and turned their homes into clerkless hotels. Um, and the IPO documents for this group suggests that they're willing to fight democracies in court for as long as you can afford to do so. You think this is an issue in the, in the county, the Airbnb uh, situation? And do you think it is, is jeopardizing some of the affordable housing initiatives? Uh, or any comments on that, on that issue?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I know the city of Columbia's been working on that for what seems like a millennia at this point. Uh, you know, I will, I will say, I, I do think that model is an issue. However, I have not heard that as a concern from anyone I've spoken to outside of the city of Columbia. Uh, and in that case, you know, obviously the city of Columbia uh, has its own planning and zoning. And as you uh, said, Mr. Scholar, that the city council is working through that with their planning zoning commission. Um, I will say if that were to become an issue, and again, I don't believe it currently is out in the county. You know, the county has its own planning and zoning commission uh, through which we can address matters like that with, again, the foundation being we need to have citizen involved. Uh, you know, I think it's great that we have a volunteer led commissions like planning and zoning or others in the county and as well as in the city of Columbia and elsewhere. But even with that, we still need to have uh, communication and engagement from the citizens who are affected. Um, so to reiterate, I, I agree that I think that model overall is a problem. I don't know that it is an issue that has been expressed out in the county.
Herb and Sue? I think you're muted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with it again. We uh, sort of. Anyway, I want to say thank you for coming and it's good to see you again. Um, I have heard similar forms of answer to a whole bunch of questions raised in your own presentation and from the audience. And almost every one of them is of the form, that's an important issue. We need to talk about that. We need to talk better about that. We need to be more inclusive. Are there any issues at this point? What you have investigated? And come to a good conclusion substantively that you would like to champion across Boone County if you become a presiding commissioner?
Absolutely. Too specifically, and I apologize if I was not direct enough. Uh, but you know, I mentioned that we're going to have a plethora of yet to be determined infrastructure dollars. Those are projects that we have yet to determine, that need to be determined. And I, I hate to say it because I know, uh, you just mentioned it. From talking to people and being inclusive, uh, to determine what is going to be best for our county. As I said, I think one of those top priorities needs to be, must be broadband development. You know, we have an unreliable patchwork throughout the county. And on top of that, we don't even have good data on how bad or, or not bad the problem is. Uh, and so that's something that using, whether it's a combination of American Rescue Plan dollars or the new infrastructure package that Congress has passed and other revenues to address that problem. Uh, I would add, you know, aside from that, the affordable housing crisis. You know, I've had the honor of being a part of Affordable Housing Coalition, one currently. And one of the things I've been saying in that group is, you know, everybody's focused on Columbia, as is often the case in Boone County. But, and how expensive it is to develop and build property and, you know, single family homes or what have you. We have the county. We have land that is just inherently more affordable than it would be to build, you know, near the intersection of Broadway and Providence in Columbia. Uh, that is something that we have, as I mentioned, the resources available to us to help kind of ignite that and, and make it happen and push it forward. Again, whether it's the ARPA dollars, CDBG, a CDFI, or a community land bank. So those are two top priorities, I would say, is broadband development, affordable housing. We have or, or soon will have resources available to us to actually make those things happen. Thank you.
Sarah Caitlin and then Justin Aldrich.
Yeah, Nick, you've talked a few times, you keep mentioning, I'm going to pick on you again, about people to the table. I mean, citizens have been living here as long as they've been living here and they've not been brought to the table yet. So how do you do that? Like practically?
Yeah. Uh, show up, you know, I, I, whether it's to, you know, one of the things I've actually been told from uh, Alderman and women throughout is come to council meetings in these small towns and meet the folks there who are engaged in their community and then get them engaged in the county level. So that's, that's one method. But again, it's really just about showing up to not just council meetings, but also just communities at large, whether that is, you know, something like the, you know, the fun things like our Hartsburg uh, pumpkin festival or things of that nature. Uh, and really everything that I'm saying here is what is, is the reason why we need a strategic plan. You know, we need citizen engagement in every capacity that is our county government. You know, to my knowledge, we haven't done a strategic plan at the county level in over 20 years. Uh, I don't know of another governmental entity that size or, or a nonprofit or a business that doesn't have a strategic plan. You know, we, it's a large uh, entity. It's an $80 million rough budget every year that hasn't had a long-term strategic vision.
Thank you.
Justin?
Hey, Nick. I'm going to put you on the spot real quick, so I apologize preemptively. Um, I'd like to ask how you feel about the Wayfair fix and growing e-commerce?
Yeah, I think we, you know, what Missouri was either the last or second to last to pass the Wayfair fix, uh, which is very Missouri of us to be uh, last or second to last, unfortunately. We need it. You know, I actually had the uh, pleasure uh, in my previous position of advocating for that Wayfair fix in the state legislature and working with the city of Columbia, Boone County and other governments to get it done. You know, it, not only does it level the playing field for our local small businesses, so they can compete with, you know, kind of ruthless corporations like Amazon, but it reinvigorates local government coffers, right? Whether it's the city of Columbia or Roachport or Harrisburg or the county government itself, we depend heavily on sales tax as a revenue stream. And the county government in this case has been fortunate to have relatively level sales tax revenue, give or take a couple percentage points. But that's not going to last forever. Uh, and again, going back to leveling the playing field for our local businesses, I think it's important that we implement it. Now, it will need to go on the ballot to be passed by the people of Boone County. And I would say with any initiative or, or item that the county government decides, we want to put this on the ballot, we want, we need it to pass. And this is why I think the burden is rightfully on county government to make their case to the people of Boone County to say, to, to convince them to support it and pass it. You know, I know the county has tried other things in the past on the ballots that have failed. And I would say often those are due, those failures are due to lack of communication uh, or a lack of community engagement. Um, and so if we as a county decide, as I think we should, that we're going to put the Wayfair fix on the ballot, then we need to pull out all the stops to, to make that case every day to every single person between whenever we decide to do it and the day it's on the ballot to say, this needs to pass. If you want good county government, if you want things funded, whether it's children's services or family resources or potholes filled and economic opportunities, we need the revenue. It's just a fact. Uh, and so I'd say, yes, I think it's a good thing. I think we need to do it. But we need to be smart about how we do it. And thank you for asking that question, Justin.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Miller, do you have another question? I think you're muted.
That might be better. Um, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, there's always talk about attracting a business and industry uh, into any area. And, and you touched upon this. Uh, but it, it appears that um, Columbia and Boone County are attracting um, uh, various businesses and industries already, number one. But I'm more interested in what kinds of uh, commercial uh, activities you would prefer to see drawn into this area. you would prefer to see drawn into this area?
Yeah, I would say, forgive me if I alter your question a little bit. I'd say rather than draw businesses in, not that it's mutually exclusive, we can do both and we, and we must. But I think we need to focus more on building up our local small businesses. Specifically, as I said, minority women owned businesses, I mean, whether, it doesn't matter what business somebody starts. If they start it and they're successful, that is a generational change for a family, especially for those who have been historically disenfranchised. And so I think it's incumbent upon the county, as well as the city of Columbia and everyone else, to say, how can we help make this a reality? What barriers can we attack to where they have a fighting chance to build a successful business? And I think there's, again, a real thumb for me is always there's room for improvement. You know, I've joked with people that if I am elected and I serve 20 years, I hope whatever young person is running after me says there's room for improvement because there always is and there always needs to be. But to go back to your question, again, I think we need to focus on, you know, kind of to borrow a phrase from Columbia Public Schools, on growing our own, right, on supporting our own folks, starting their own businesses, employing their neighbors and, and, you know, lifting their families out of poverty or providing generational wealth and a generational change that they have historically been, you know, disempowered to achieve. On, you know, to your explicit question of attracting businesses and types, you know, I would want to attract companies who are good corporate citizens, let's say. Those who are not just going to come in here and say, oh, we want all these tax benefits, but we don't want any of your input. Okay, well, we have an issue, right? Because I want someone who is going to work with us. And I will say, I think when it comes to things like our Chapter 100 bonds, I think we have a robust process in place to ensure that stakeholders in our community, whether it's school boards or nonprofits and cities like I see at Columbia or elsewhere, are represented in those discussions to, to ensure to the best of our ability that nobody is taking advantage of anything or that we're not as much as we can, you know, kind of forecast going to be, you know, taking a loss beyond reason or anything of that nature. So again, both growing our own, ensuring that corporations that we bring in, whether it's something like the Swift Foods that recently got announced last, was that this year, it's been a long year, is, is in line and in, in willing to work with our community values.
Thank you.
Happy to take any other questions?
Hello, I can't seem to put my hand up. I'm, do you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, this is a win call, Will. I haven't heard any mention of natural resource protection in our county. I would also hope one of your criteria for corporations is protection and preservation of our water resources and non-polluting history of this, you know, of this corporation, all these issues that are beyond monetary. And I'd address your, your thoughts about, I mean, the whole area that hasn't been addressed today, which has been natural resources, parks. For instance, energy issues like the wind, wind power development, renewable resource development and encouragement of that. So this is very late to be bringing this up perhaps, but I hope you'll be able to in the future.
Yes, thank you for asking that question. It is a very important topic. And I will say, you know, that goes to what I was just saying, Mr. Miller, that when we're attracting businesses, they need to align with our values. And I am steadfast in that one of our values is protecting our environment, right? Our, whether it's our beautiful parks or our water resources, those are finite, right? We, once they're gone, we're not getting them back. And so whether it's attracting businesses or building out infrastructure or, or development projects in general, we need to ensure that we are prioritizing the protection of our environment.
Thank you. Hope.
From time to time in Boone County, one sees a certain amount of, a certain attitude that it's Columbia and it's the rest of the county. One thing that is, that's expressed itself in many ways. One of the ways that it has shown up episodically in recent times is a number of communities out cities, out county are going on an annexation binge or talk about undertaking an annexation binge. Ashland, for example. Does the county have a proper interest in trying to shape the directions of that before 10 years from now when we get a strategic plan in place?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've all seen massive development and specifically to your point, annexation, whether it's Columbia or Ashland, which are probably two most notable. But the county is again positioned well, whether it's Presiding Commissioner or Commissioner Aldrich or whoever, to kind of be that, I don't want to say neutral there, because obviously they're not neutral perhaps. But to have that leadership position of saying, we need to address this, we can't just keep, you know, especially the example of Columbia and Ashland, right? I mean, they're kind of racing to swallow up what's left between, around the airport and things of that nature. But going back to, you know, prioritizing our environment and prioritizing, in this case, smart growth, right? Not, it can't be development at all costs because it's going to cost us things that we can't afford. Whether it's, you know, you, you build a new subdivision or what have you, or, or commercial development project, then you have to account for its impacts on roads, impacts on the sewer system, broadband. We cannot just, none of these things stand alone. They're all connected. And the county has that kind of bird's eye view of the whole county to say, you know, Columbia, Ashland, or whoever, you need to talk, I'll moderate, let's figure this out. To your point before, and as I said during my, my monologue, if you will, before it's a problem. Let's talk about this and address it, not just talk about it, before it's a crisis in 10 years. Before we're 15 years down the road and saying, what, we don't have sewer capacity and there's houses out there that aren't getting what they need.
Follow-up question. Do I interpret you correctly to say that the proper role of the county commission is to act as a disinterested moderator?
I certainly wouldn't say disinterested. I'd say the opposite, very interested moderator, but moderator, yes. Their interest is the betterment of the whole county, right? So whether that part of the county is Ashland or Harrisburg or Roachport. But yes, I would say explicitly to act as a moderator.
Okay, even between a good idea and a bad idea.
Yes. Good and bad, I suppose, is a subjective, we'll see. Any other questions?
If, if I may, I, I'm, one last question for me. Any thoughts about transportation? I'm aware that in order for me to get to any place in the county or in central Missouri, the only way for me to do that is to use a vehicle. And that's not the most efficient way to get the things done. What, what thoughts do you have about transportation?
It's a problem, right? You know, and it's something that touches on everything else, whether it's economic opportunity or affordable housing, right? I mean, one of the reasons why affordable housing as an issue is so focused in Columbia is because the people who are affected by it also have the problem of transportation, right? They, maybe they can afford a house out in Roachport or Hallsville, but they don't have reliable transportation to get to their job that is at a manufacturer in Columbia. So it's certainly an issue that we need to address. And I think that is one that specifically the county and the city of Columbia should work together on. You know, I've heard talks, I know over the years of establishing a regional transit authority or doing pilot programs for this or that. And I think all of those should be on the table. And I would add that when we're bringing in businesses and especially the manufacturers who are already here, who attract people from throughout the county for jobs, that those, those businesses need to be at the table because they have resources and it's in their benefit and their interest for their employees, no matter where they are in the county, to reliably be able to get to work. So it's not just a government issue, it's also affects businesses and they should be at the table and they should be helping address it.
Carl?
Yeah, I, Miller's comment about transportation also made me think about outlying communities and their capacity for daycare. For some of the, for some of the folks who work in, even in Columbia and other places cannot do so or cannot do so without great difficulty unless they have adequate daycare in some of their own small towns. Any ideas about that?
You know, I would say there's several prongs to that. I mean, one that comes to my mind immediately is that's an area where again, we need to grow our own. We need to support, you know, women and minority owned businesses, in, in this case childcare facilities, being established. Because often, especially those who need childcare and can't get it, it is often very much the women and minority owned communities who need it the most. So that's, you know, that one is a kind of a two birds, one stone approach, if you will. But, but again, similar to the transportation topic that Mr. Miller mentioned, I think it's important to bring the businesses, the large, especially again, the manufacturers who tend to hire those low to moderate income communities to the table and say, again, let's combine our resources, county government, city of Columbia, you know, craft foods, what have you, let's work together and look at the resources we have. Because I know if you look, if you talk to someone like the mayor of Hallsville, Logan Carter, him and his wife, they operate a childcare facility. And they have, I think he told me, like a three or five year wait, something like that. I mean, that's just, that, that doesn't work, right? And as much as you might say, oh, that means business is good, why don't you open a second facility? It's not that easy and it's not that straightforward. So I think it's, again, bringing people together, the, the city of Columbia, the other outlying communities, especially someone like Mayor Carter from Hallsville and those businesses, those large entities who have, again, a stake in that going well and that issue being addressed because it affects everything.
So, so I just follow up, so I take it that, that you, you see a shared, kind of a shared responsibility, both for the employer and for some of the community, the outlying communities in the county to, to address such issues as, as childcare?
Right, well, and I would say it's a shared responsibility because it's a shared problem.
Is there another one? I see your time is about up, we have maybe time for one, Pam, all right.
I wanted to know a little bit about your experience in the US Senate.
So both my time in the US Senate, the US House, and really everything has been all legislative affairs. So it was, you know, developing legislation, drafting, and was working with committees. In, in my case, when I was in the Senate, it was working with immigration and actually marijuana legalization, which you, you know, not necessarily the most connected issues, but those are what I did. And in the House, it was financial services and things of that nature. I'm, I'd like to say I'm, if you couldn't tell, I'm more of a jack of all trades than an expert of one topic.
All right, Nick, I want to thank you for coming, spending an hour with us today. So thank you very much. We have the Mule Skinner, appreciate it very much. A reminder to everyone, next week, we're not having a meeting, Thanksgiving, and just enjoy the time off with your family, friends, whoever you can be around with. The following week, Ian Thomas, Columbia Fourth City, Fourth Ward City Council will be here. And also as a reminder on that, I said the fifth, whatever, that first Saturday is the third, first Friday, Ian Thomas will be here and we'll also have an executive committee meeting. So put that on your calendars, especially for the officers, we want to plan on sticking around. All right, I'm going to slip out, I've got to head back to take care of the Democratic office here in Boone County. But if, if Nick is where he can stick around, y'all want to chat some more, feel free. So I'm going to drop off as long as Pam can be on to keep this thing going.